Give me a second. It's almost.
Say aye.
Aye.
Motion. Rich.
Morning. Yeah. Um, I'll discuss today and kind of enough after some of the end and stuff over the weekend, so. Got a set of plans, final plans due Tuesday. I had some fear problems. I'll probably bring a type sheet for you guys next to sign off.
Recording.
So. That's for either with going north. This is the bill over later, so. And then, uh, talked to Michikama last week about. I'll set it up. They were trying to figure out who was supposed to set the time and place up on stake here this. Budget season here slows down as we get stuff figured out. A whole lot to discuss this morning that I can't, so. To review or look at or whatever. Not a lot's changed. I know we've got some smaller. Color work hopefully that we're trying to get done this spring, summer season, I guess, so. All in all, not a lot changing the budget as far as we only do. I track trends when I do my budget because things always change. It was hard to determine exactly what we're gonna do with the trends usually because where the money's at. So right now. With the carryover balance, the income side of things is budgeted, I think, at six point three million. And expenditure for five point eight carryover balance of twelve, one hundred and sixteen thousand, which is really low of a carryover balance, but. I have a feeling with projection wise, we'll have a larger carryover balance this year too, so that'll change. What I don't have for you right now though is I'm still working on the farm market funds and bridge funds. So to tell you any projects we're gonna do, what I do is I budget everything that's necessities first, maintenance and everything else. The last two things I've budgeted for is construction and equipment. That usually tells us what we have left and. Construction's usually first and equipment's last, but we need to start to keep our system of upgrades on your equipment, so. Um, we've got a half a million dollars in equipment, which. The way things cost things isn't a lot, but and it's gonna determine when we get the equipment to, if we order something, I don't know if it'll take us a year to get it or not, so. But to keep an eye on, on the supply chain and see what things right now, I think the last letter I got, things are. Nine, ten months out, so I mean, that puts you almost into another fiscal year by the time you get around to ordering it, so.
What kind of equipment are you thinking?
What's that?
What kind of equipment are you looking?
Well, I'm trying to think if we're gonna need, trying to remember what we ordered, what we got last, I think.
Truck.
Uh, we probably need another truck. Um, motor graders are getting, I mean, we probably have enough in the budget to do. Maybe not quite a motor raider and a truck. I'm hoping to upgrade my vehicle here. It's got a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it, but. That's, that's, that's a small cost compared to the larger product, so. It'll be either a truck or a motor grader, and I'm just trying to remember. I think the last motor grader we got was the John Deere, and that was a couple of years ago now, so. The thing that the, the tough part is with the motor graders is we're having a really difficult time getting parts for these things now. When we call our parts suppliers, they're scavenging to find what we need on, on some more stuff too. And then the biggest issue is those Champion Volvos are backup machines, so they're not used all year round. They're just using the winter time, which. Is a critical time for them to be available, but you know, you start. You know, we gotta figure out when, when enough of the market's taking money into the older things that you can get parts for, and maybe. Maybe a person starts looking at used motor graders as backups instead of, we're, we're still putting our new stuff.
Right.
Back down on the fleet when we get new, when we, we push it back into the backup equipment, but. Sometimes we, uh, the way the backup, everything's working right now, but you know, trying to figure out what to do in the future for. As these machines age less gracefully than they have. Any questions on the budget that you've been, you guys had a chance to look at things?
No.
It's, it's hard to, on this budget to, uh, pinpoint anything. Like I said, I just average trends out. We'll probably have. It's all beats this year, just with some small bridge stuff that we've gotta get done or need to get looked at anyway. But I know our bridge inspection is complete and we're coming here, and I don't think we've had any major issues to deal with, so.
When will we see the, the bridge report?
Um, I don't know for sure. I, I know it'll probably be later this spring, probably February or March. And that, that's usually, I'll, I'll hopefully get that before I do my DOT budget program. That way I can start programming stuff. Right now I've got stuff that. From previous years' programs that kind of gets pushed around and I look at the funding and move what I think is less critical down a year, but. Once we get the bridge report, we'll know if we've got some bridges posted and then they'll give us recommendations as to what they see, like they need something programmed. In four years, we can program it in four years and six years now, we can kind of hold back, but. Each year is, you know, every two years, you just never know the deterioration of some of this stuff there and trying to keep up with it is the top part, so.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there, I don't know if you've heard much. Is there any? New news or what? The big infrastructure building?
The only thing that I can. Nothing is, is set in stone. What I understand is yes, they, they put more money into infrastructure. Some of it seems to be light rail, things like that. I mean, they, I think they've expanded what transportation is and something, but. They've added more money to bridges. A lot of it seems to be more competitively. You have to, you have to put an application in to get some, and it's for large bridges that you normally can't afford. Like, I, I know our bridge funding is gonna, is projected to be lower. This is bigger than previous years because with the improvements we do, the funding is based on square footage of poor bridge deck. Well. As we improve things, the square footage of poorer gets reduced, and then every two years you do another grid inspection and, and, but right now we're projected at, at. I'm gonna be wrong if I say it, but I wanted to say not much over two hundred thousand dollars for the year, and that doesn't even put a box over the ground. So, or it, it won't put a twin box covered in the ground. It might put a single box covered in the ground. That's, we don't have many locations to put singles in.
That's, we talked about the Transportation Board on Wednesday, I think they said, any of the bridge funding is gonna be for major bridges.
Yeah, the, 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 the one to, one to ten million dollar bridges that we don't afford to replace.
Right.
You know, we would try to apply for something in that, you know, if we've got something over the shell rock that needs to be replaced, you're looking at pushing that. Limit, I mean, especially when you're getting two hundred thousand dollars a year. You're looking at, you know, even if, if it's a pretty large bridge, you're looking at ten years to try to hold that money. We can't hold that money that long. We can't. They only allow us a five year or a, a. A five year accumulation or three years, I can't remember. We don't get to accumulate very long. We gotta spend it. Well, that's. You can use other funding to help supplement it, but it just kind of states that we can't hold our money longer to do big things.
Right.
So.
That's what it is.
Right. So. We try to do. Try to make do with it, yeah, and.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, then the funding, you, you understand the funding about as much as the rest of us as far as where that money's going.
Yeah.
And they don't have it specifically ironed out yet as to how much is going where, and that we won't see that for another, who knows, eight months.
Or more. Usually does to larger areas and.
Yeah.
We'll get ours.
Yeah.
Little.
We'll get our token.
Goals. Okay, guys got any other questions?
Okay. Right.
Um. We will. Just to get drainage points.
Motion to approve. Claims.
A second. Okay, moving to second for discussion. None, all's fair, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Some claims. Taking to approve the claims.
Second.
Second. For discussion. If you're none, all's fair, say aye.
Aye.
Think we're good, aren't we? Bring other stuff over. Get it done. Those are any reports. This is a manager.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks.
I'm seeing the reports. So. Okay, I think. Looker. We have an addendum, endem. For law enforcement, Kansas. On that, Dan, you wanna talk about?
Um, just the first one to come in, they all went out with the new stances, that the new figures are on there. And then the four dollar increase that we're gonna do the next three years, we went to all the meetings, so that's just the first one of all coming in.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the denim to the agreement for law enforcement for the city of Kansas.
Uh, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moving to second, any further discussion? There are none, all's fair, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to carry. Can you come in? So we've got the. Four months, I guess, right, Jackie? Yeah, you're not coming in very good for some reason. Okay, well, I think we, we'll, we'll muddle through it. We're not hearing you, sorry. Okay.
Try it again.
Try it again. Nothing? Okay. Okay.
You're really muffled.
Yeah.
I don't know what to do.
Well, there, there it was coming.
Drink your bottle.
Or no?
You come and then you go. It doesn't fade in and out. I don't know what's going on.
Can you hear me now?
Right now, I can.
Okay, um, Jim Olman?
Yep.
He, um, always turns in his request for the, the Winnebago Historical Society.
Gotcha, okay.
You have those there.
Yeah, okay.
I told him I'd share those with you.
Okay, I guess, yeah, I wasn't sure if he was coming in or what, so.
Oh, with, with COVID and everything, we just, he decided against it.
And he's requesting a thousand dollars, right?
Correct.
So do we need approval on it?
No, no, it's just part of the budget stuff.
If you wanna look through this in spare time, Enos and stuff, yeah. Okay, yeah, so he's requesting a thousand dollars and it's, he's come down on over the years and. So something we'll look at, I guess, right?
Yep.
Good work, so, okay. All right, so then as far as the board appointments, we, you want us to go through all of those?
Yeah, please.
Everybody tell nine o'clock, great. Okay, so we got a stack of them here, Jackie, and, uh, one of them is from the Worth County Conservation. That's Enos, you got reported to the board, is that right?
I guess so.
Yep, okay. And then. The Nyacog ones, you want me to go through those, so.
Do you, do you have that email that I sent?
Uh, maybe.
It has them all in order.
Okay. Got it. So do you want us to do one? Okay, so we got county con, county board of health, three years, Diane Miley. Commission for Veterans Affair, three years, is Phil Hackart. Week Commissioner, one year, Mike Bodie. Conservation Board, five years, Terry Reese. County eminent board, common eminent domain compensation board, so.
You don't need to go through all those, but, um, you are one short right now, so you guys will have to find one more person.
And.
What area?
Yeah, what area?
Act One.
Well, it could be any of those, okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, uh, we're gonna add zoning commission, Jeff Corville, Dave Quisley, zoning board of adjustment, five years, Steve Butler. Zoning administrative officer, five years, Matt Dubay. North West Isle Care Connection Governing Board, uh, AJ would be the lead person, you asked to be the alternate.
I need to change the name on that too, sorry.
What's that?
I need to change the name on that too.
I want to just care connections in North Island.
Okay, got you, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll do that. Windworth Eco Advisory Board at the Enus, three years, uh, Board of Directors, Second Judicial Department Correctional Service, which Enus would be the main, AJ would be the alternate. Nyacog, one year, AJ Stone, Marcus Navy is alternate, alternate, Rick Scholbach and Paul Norland. Transportation Policy Board is Marcus Navy and Melissa Michaels. Macog Revolving Loan Fund, Andy Helgason, and Airport Zoning. Ordinance Board of Adjustment, AJ Stone for three years.
Well, if you back up to Nyacog.
Yep.
Were you having issues with Paul going to meetings?
Yeah, I haven't seen him there.
So you might wanna find somebody different for that.
Okay, and that's just any citizen, correct? I don't think there's any special.
So.
Yeah.
All right, we'll do some searching for that one then, but so that's, but I did talk to Rick Scholbach, he, he was at the last meeting and. He's still, still going, still involved, so.
The other one that you could pick is he could have somebody else from his, um, board so that he's got an alternate. If he didn't, if he couldn't make it, he could have somebody from his council go. That'd be another option if he had anybody interested.
Right, good.
But just need a motion for those so that I can get letters out.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the, uh, board appointments.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion will carry.
Okay, so then for the Second Judicial District, or is that one paper to sign? For Patty Yetmar?
Is that in this packet here?
Yeah, I hope so. Or Chelsea maybe gave it to you?
I'm not.
Well, maybe I didn't get it to her right away.
No, I got the denim, I got the Heritage Park, I've got the one for Enus for the Conservation Board, I've got the, uh. One from Nyacog with all the appointments on there.
I don't think that's Enus. I think that's second. The second.
So, uh, no, this is the one I got here, County Conservation Board.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, no, that's all right, I'm not, and I'm not seeing the rest of it. Nothing else in the folder.
Okay, forget it.
Okay.
I'll catch up with you.
So, okay. Yeah, you'll fill out, fill out the rest of this to Nyacog there, see if we can get somebody to take Paul's place. And then, yeah, we'll look at the other stuff.
Nope.
All right, so, and we're not, we're not acting at all on this for the. With Kevin Epperali, are we today? That's table. It was in here, so, okay.
No.
Got you. All right. So. That pretty well covers everything on the agenda that we had. No, it's just, uh, department reviews.
I didn't go with all those.
Oh, sorry, Melissa, you on?
I am.
Okay.
I'm just, uh, following up with Ready Fuels today, and then we have an advisory board meeting on Wednesday.
Okay.
Beating Thompson at the Brandyneir.
You able to go, Enos, or you're on? Okay.
I don't know.
Okay. Okay, you guys got anything else for Melissa then?
Don't think so.
All right, thanks, Melissa.
Yeah.
Yes, I guess you're on the agenda.
Um, I think you guys have emailed a response letter to the DNR.
Yep.
Um, pretty decent report, um. Just going through, uh, number one was at ten airline, we, one of the airlines, we have to take a static kind of pumping water level quite once a month. And one of the wells quit working, so an airline came apart or something, so next time we service the well, we probably will fix that. Um, number two. Uh, they don't like our meter, so we had to buy a meter that goes lower than. Reading that we're getting, so I'd order that, but that's like, I don't know, a month and a half out, so I ordered it. Can't do it until we get it, so we're testing it with the equipment we have now. Um, she just wants to go. Then when she was there, didn't register, and she says it's gotta have some registered, and I'm like, well. If we're adding the correct amount, you shouldn't see a reading in the system, because we're taking out an iron builder, but. So she made mandatory that we buy a meter. Um, and the fourth item was, she didn't like that we didn't do bacteria sample, like we had pulled the mixer out of the tower. No, kind, I did it on purpose by not emptying it, but they still consider that maintenance. Since we had somebody inside of it, so next time we do that, we'll have to do the, the two bacteria samples, so I decided we won't do that next time, so. Not a big deal. And then on our permit for doing our, uh, disinfectant byproducts, the permit writer somehow used. When I worked for Diamond Joe, my address is seven fifty Diamond Joe Lane, but I took the sample in the casino and my permit says. Seven fifty Diamond Joe Lane. Diamond Joe Casino. Well, I still think the same of casino, but it's using our old address. And so they had a problem, and so they maybe changed it to seven, seven, seven Diamond Joe Lane, that's where the actual sample was taken. And she said they'll fix the permits, the rating permits this year anyway, so, as they're supposed to fix it. The left hand don't know, he's talking to the right hand, so.
Right.
Right, but I just had to address it, and so I, I did what we had. Well, that was the, the bread and butter of the inspection. We're good.
Okay.
You guys have any questions, I'll answer them.
Sounds like they're just justifying their jobs, so.
Yeah.
Few minor things, but what do you do?
Right.
At least there's nothing major.
Right, right.
I missed that. Yeah, everything, everything else can be fixed easily, so.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Department heads. I think, I don't think we'll get too far into the courthouse billing discussions today or. Probably COVID right now, but.
That's you.
Look, everybody's back in their offices now.
Yep, from, uh, construction, deconstruction, what do you wanna say? And it's all fixed up.
Cleaned up, yeah.
Well.
Like we have carpet to do, yeah.
Carpet to do, um, Brian needs to get a shelf to get all supplies back. Yeah, our desk are being shelved right now.
Yeah, he was looking at that and he called and. On some shelving, but it was a two, about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Oh.
Or cabinets, or she's saying, shelving cabinets. So I told him, um, I'm gonna look around a little bit.
Yeah.
That's just seems just crazy high to me, but things are inflating, but.
I mean, at least if we're told on there, make, buy something that we can reuse later.
Right, yeah, something we can move.
Buy anything too cheap either, but.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, that seems pretty extreme for.
That's like fire rated cabinets or something, I don't.
I don't know, for outlook or some books.
Right.
Yeah.
But I could be off too, and I.
Everything doubled or tripled unfortunately, so.
Right.
But should be able to get something there that's not terrible versus slapping something in there too, that don't make any sense, so.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Good. Gotcha. As far as, uh. Building discussions, yeah, we obviously know. We got a lot of failing stuff inside that building.
Yeah.
I guess we need to look at taking that step now. The next step. My facility, which facility's gonna get started, which facility's gonna get done first, and how we're gonna do it.
So.
Well, you know, we gotta get something going. One of the buildings over there. Oh.
Lucked out, it could've been worse, you know?
Right, right. But I don't know what, um. You know, that agreement with FTH was. For everything, but I don't think, I think kind of pay as we utilize that service, so it's not like we're gonna come up with nine hundred thousand to. Get started, not, you know, just kind of pay as you go, and won't say, the bill is for when they provide the services, but.
Right.
Um. Yeah, we need to. Get on that decision here real shortly, I think, if we wanna get this process going, so it's still probably would be two years easily before anything got completed.
Yep. Yeah, we gotta, we gotta do something, right? And it's just a matter of time before some pipe upstairs breaks. You know?
Yeah, most all that stuff is at the same age and not in good shape, but it looks like the stuff that was on the floor, so.
Hopefully it's not as bad. Can't see it all, but gotta be someone's not good too. So. Boiler put in in nineteen fifty, and there's a lot of things could fail here.
Right.
And, and we found out too how vulnerable we are, just with the slight thing it was as far as office staff and what we do, so.
Yeah.
Need to work on an alternative plan too for the next couple of years, and if something like that happens again. We need to have some backup.
We have no place else to build.
No.
Make right, problem.
Yep. Um, we can come here on a short time basis, but not tough to get everybody in there if we had a total building shutdown.
Right.
Uh, one department could come here for a few days if they had to, but, you know, other than that, there's no way we can move all the three departments over there, or here wants to be.
I think you saw a, uh, small sample of what trying to conduct business in conjunction with.
Construction.
Construction. Is too, so.
Yep. Absolutely, absolutely. And as far as the code thing, I think that's still developing. Keep working with public health on that, and as guidelines fold and unfold, we'll just have to. Deal with them, I guess, just hopefully everybody that they think they're sick, stay home, get tested before you come in and, you know, it's a. A positive step, so. We do have a couple of meetings, a couple, what about Supervisor Weeklys?
I had, well, we all had Windworth Eco, executive meeting.
Yep.
We looked at the financial report there, basically proposed the budget and approved it, it was the biggest deal. I had partners for children.
Okay.
Uh, we decided to fund YSS for strengthening family curriculum. We have some, uh, criteria that we need back first. But, uh. And then we went through all the contracts that we have at the present time. To look at their expenditures and what they spent, because we don't want the money to revert back to the state.
Got you.
So, other than that, Mark Cross, I mean, we talked about an hour or so.
Okay. Wonder if he was still around, I haven't heard from.
What's that?
I was wondering if he was still around, I haven't heard from.
Yeah, the city was gonna call you guys, did he call you?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
He probably will.
Yeah, there, we, we're still going head to head on Shadow, like her.
Good.
So.
Keep the conversation.
We had a good discussion.
Good. Good. Hey, do?
I just had Windworth Eco Monday, um, yeah, uh, a bunch of time there, and I didn't have any else rest of the week, we'll show, got canceled.
Windworth Eco, and then I had hazmat and transportation, which we basically reviewed, speaker couldn't come, so we just did our budget reviews, um. The per capita levy will be up slightly on the hazmat side. Transportation, like I said, we went over some of the programs like what Rich was talking about. Transportation, like I said, we went over some of the programs like what Rich was talking about and the bridge thing, you mentioned that. Still a lot of, lot to be determined on this federal money and stuff. So see what happens. So. All right. So. I guess it's, it is nine o'clock. You guys are up.
Hello.
If you're comfortable or less, we can hear you.
The past, I felt like I had a hot seat or something. I'm here again. It's my annual time to be here representing the county libraries. I see Connie from Manley and Will from Kentset and Martine from Joyce are joining us. And this is Amanda. She is our newest library recruit in Wright County. She's at the Henry Town Library. And Nancy Wackel is still unwrapped, but she's, she's been having some health issues.
That's okay.
Um, so last year, we, again, thank you for your support of the libraries. You give us nineteen thousand dollars each to support the library. Um, this year we are asking again for another increase, uh, twenty thousand for each library. You know, inflation in everything, it feels like is happening and utilities are worse and even possible has increased. But, um, we also want to be a little more competitive with offering better salaries. We are not well known for our um, what we can offer to our workers, be that the director or assistants. So we like to reward our workers for sticking with us. Um, and I guess just as an update of what's happening with the libraries, although COVID has you know, affected all of us. We are all back full strength as to our hours and whatnot. Sometimes we have certain restrictions. As of right now, I'm not offering story time, for example, just because little kids and, you know, germs, even if it's not COVID, right now it's a hard time of year.
Yes.
We, the Northwood Library has started two book clubs though, so that's been exciting. The senior center is in charge of one, but they have stuff library and that. So we're, we're continuing to work back on our programming because that's really a lot of what we do now. And so COVID has been hard for that. Uh, we also have increased our checkouts on our bridges, which is our online checkout of books. That I know for me, it's doubled since COVID has happened monthly. We still only check out about a hundred twelve ish, and now it's over two hundred every time. And that also is increasing cost this year. Um, it increases for how many patrons you have, or not patrons. I think it's actually per capita of your city. So ours will all jump up just a little bit, but not, nothing horrible. So I don't think we want to lose it. I think all of us offer it, or maybe. Do you think so? I, yeah, we just started it this year and paid for that this year. Questions for us?
Um, and I, we were looking, or should we, I was looking at this before. I just see there's most communities put out just as much money as the county does in support of their library and some are less. Um, so for future, probably won't affect this year, but next year, we possibly like to see a little more support from that community. There's money coming in. Um, if they can work into their budget, just, just the fact that, you know, there's there, there's a gap in there. Um, you know, some we, we go, we go to this limit. Some are right about the same number. A couple of the bigger communities have more, you know, have a higher number from their, from their community. Um, but we just like to see that number get a little closer to the same amount of support from the city as what the county is doing. Um, but like I said, I don't think it'll affect this year, but if something I have a little plan, let everybody know to plan out for next year. Try to talk with their city council and.
And that is something I've discussed with my city council and.
Yeah, I, I can't remember which towns it is and I'm not pointing any fingers out, but I just wanna, it just, you know, we've got a year to look at this and just. And we just need to talk with those guys because that's, and I love libraries. I think they're a great thing. I wish more kids utilized them the way they used to when I was growing up. Um, but it, it's just, we've got to look at that as far as financial standpoint is of the amount of support we can give hopefully that community.
Unfortunately.
Honestly, you saying that is more backing to us to go to the cities and say that too.
Yeah, because that's will probably affect the final, the funding next year.
Unfortunately, three of these towns don't have a school in which, like I grew up in Joyce, we, we went from school to library every couple of days. It seemed like. That was our library, I think at that time. But, uh, yeah, so just a quick, what's, what's the other income like that you have? Other income sources that you guys get? Sometimes are these like grants and things you can get?
Well, yeah, I guess so. You just got a grant too, right? We, we, I say all of us apply for W C D grants, at least yearly.
I didn't know if there's other things to the state that you can get.
Fraser's donation.
Gotcha.
We do get some money from this, from the state, but I mean, like for us, it's like one thousand two hundred dollars or something. And that does depend on your, um, tier level status, like if you're fully accredited. So depending on what you.
But just me, like Manley's better. You do know, I don't know if they do a big fundraiser. You know, I know Joyce, because I'm not sure if it's Valentine. I mean, COVID's, COVID's messed up a lot of stuff.
We do, as I'm new, so we, I only, I believe we only do one official fundraiser besides our book.
Okay.
And that's our ice cream social thing on the.
Sundowner Day.
Tracks and. We've increased our copying, how much copies we make because our house is closed. So that's part of what we bring in is our copies and. Years ago, so now it's colored, so.
Sure.
Yeah. No, I'm just curious. I just, I know, I mean, I know like they do some fundraisers and Joyce has a, usually does a breakfast. I feel whatever has tried to do that. Okay. Well, we'll, uh, take a look at this, I guess. And yeah.
See if we can make it all work.
Appreciate you working hard in that point. I know in a small community, but I see it's one of the only things to get.
We try to, especially in the summer. I mean, we, it's weird because it's January, but we start cleaning for our summer.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I do ask the, I guess some will bring in too. We ask for donations for the summer.
Yeah.
We do too. Yep.
All right. Thank you guys for coming in. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Well, I guess, I don't know. We don't have to stay right on schedule. Dan, I guess you're up if you want to be ready.
The Northwood budget, we did get a three percent increase this year. So our budget is at three hundred and seventy four thousand forty nine dollars and that's what they're paying us in. So that just covers exactly what our enforcement is. As far as going up in there, um, I just moved a little bit of money around basically. Fuel is one thing in that one that, um, we are behind on right now. So I put a little extra money into the fuel part because gas has gone up and you gotta catch up a little bit. On my general, uh, the only things I did, um, with the union contract at three point seven five percent increase for twenty two of my employees, we went with that. With the comptelord recommendation, I put eight in for my supervisory staff. And then insurance, I did move some money around, uh, because we are going to, um, jail food has really gone up in price or it's just gonna kill us. Gasoline again went up, tires is going up big time. So I've increased tires, but I moved the money out of maintenance and that to move into those categories. The other thing is with the, um, being shut down, we're, we were citing releasing a lot, not only us, but the state control B C I. Um, our jails numbers are starting to pick up and we're starting to see those warrants coming in. Last week we had a record where we had three cars going same day on transports, one chick saw one pulled and one seragoral. Never had three cars at the same time going picking up inmates. So.
So we get a reimbursement for that then from somebody at that point? We house them?
Well, those are our inmates.
There are inmates. Okay, they're, they're actually ones from this county that have.
Yeah, they had warrants down there because of pandemic, everybody was releasing them. So they had warrants. So and that's where I think you asked me.
Yeah.
Mauer County, we had to pay them and we need to get them. Like with us, we do the same thing and I don't disagree. We give everybody a courtesy, like four to five hours to get there, to get your, if not, we're going to charge you a day of room.
Okay.
Which is, and, uh, because, you know, you still get the money wrapped into them with the food and everything else. So. Um. This is the last of the union contract. We do have negotiations coming up this fall. I would like to do them, start them a lot earlier than the last time because we ran clear into January, February, before I could even put any numbers down.
Yeah.
Um, so we do have those coming up again this fall and I'll talk to, uh,
Renee.
Renee on that about seeing if we can't get the ball going September or something. So we can see some real live numbers. Otherwise, like I said, the only things that went up were salary and, uh, insurance.
Yeah. Pretty much everybody's. Guess. Guys got any questions?
Not right now.
Well, let's see. Well, everything plugs in, I guess, when gets it all stacked up.
That's, uh, that's three percent on Northwood. That'll cover, that's what they're. Yeah, raise the raises for the employees, right?
Yeah, that's everything.
No, but I mean, yeah, because that's, that was, that was the, we negotiated with the union last time. That three percent will cover that.
What we did was three percent across the board.
Yeah.
So that's the, not only three percent on, it's three percent on the fuel, three percent on everything. So with that, we just rolled the dice at a three percent figure for the next, was that a three year or four year?
The contract? Three, aren't it three?
Three.
We go through twenty twenty six.
I thought it was a four year.
Four year.
Yeah.
Yep. So we went up three percent each year and that's on everything. So it's a crystal ball thing when you do it. So hopefully what we do is hopefully everything weighs out. If we don't have to send anyone to the academy, we'll be fine in there. Is when we have to send someone to the academy, that's when that account gets hit down first. Um, I know in fuel, um, one thing. When we did the budget sheets, it looked like we were doing good on that. Well, Rich didn't bill us for a month, so we got two months and one month. And right now at December, which should be my fifty percent. The rural, I'm running point four six over and in the Northwood one. Oh, that one's a little worse. Um, I'm running eleven point eight three percent over right now.
That's going to be hard to control that fuel.
Yeah, what always. It's been reason, you know?
Ten cents at the gas pump usually means about six thousand dollars on my budget.
For the average for the year. Yeah. And if you have a fifty cent swing in a year's time.
Put you behind.
It's nice when it drops with the sun, but it doesn't always happen either. So.
Right.
I mean, it.
Yeah. And I mean, our squad cars got pushed back this year. We finally got the third one done. The fourth one still has to go out to get done, the, the jail one. And and the only thing I did different in there, I didn't put any money in for the sinks on our budget. That money's in there, but that's only can be used for certain things. But we did put money into our probation account, um, to replace the vehicle in probation. So we'll try to do three replacements this year.
Yeah. And that's where sometimes they'll bulk fuel capacities. It's a good deal. You can do some right buying.
Yeah.
Stabilize your costs a little bit.
We're seeing a big difference from the explorers to the top, from the tapos to the explorers. Um, you know, we're saving about a gallon a night for each unit.
True.
Um, the other thing that is when we switched from Verizon to A T and T, surprisingly, we got A T and T first nap, but I bet we were saving three, four hundred dollars a month by making that switch from A T to A T and T.
And it helps.
That's a big, that's a big.
For you.
Tires, tires are ridiculous right now.
Did you get some bought up in store? You were talking about.
I'm working on it. Um, that, but I haven't got anything firm yet. Um, that we may have to, we could get a better deal by going through someone big. We might have to take a trailer to Des Moines, little tires up and bring them back up, but. Um. I'm working on it. I haven't got nothing for him yet.
We'll be going down February ninth or tenth or whatever. So.
Yeah, we could pull a trailer down.
With us.
You get all their time.
Right. Be tricky parking, be tricky parking downtown Des Moines.
Yeah, we talked to the parking director years ago.
Oh, and that's where I talked to. You know, we like to stay local with our money as much as possible. And it wouldn't be cutting them out because we're getting state bids from them and just getting a better state bid at volume. We still be bringing them back and doing all the, the switching over and all that here. And I, I talked to Kirby and Joe and both of them are fine with it.
Yeah. I mean, they can, yeah. Yeah, gotta do it different times.
Well, the problem too is that they're getting them, getting the tire.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I know. Yeah. I don't know. Car wise, I don't know how bad it is, but I'm sure it's going to get there just like. Semi wise, I don't know. You know, I mean, I know the rumors are going around. You weren't going to get them by the end of the year.
My brother flat spotted two of them. One of his, one of his axles was stuck and he didn't know it at the time. And he got replaced the same day. So.
Okay, they still got some wrong. There's still a few wrong. I know, yeah.
We try to keep one set on the shelf at Kirby's, get some caves.
And they ordered tires for my forty sixteen. Like I Wednesday and they were there the next Tuesday if you put on.
Yeah, I know. I got some in the year for my pickup, but I mean, they were thirty bucks higher than they were. You know, I mean, he gave me a good price on them, but they were going up that much in the next couple of days, another fifty bucks.
You know, I mean, so. We, we paid for them in September when we yeah, we bought the car off lease. We paid for them and just told them we're, and get them put on the next time they do no change. They didn't order them until then.
Three, three hundred and fifty dollars pop. That adds up.
Tower rental, Joe and I really haven't got any invites on that. The lager rental is still going good. We got four renting and we've had some interest from some others, but no one's been.
Okay. Yeah, take them as they come, I guess.
Yeah, the lagers doing really well. I mean, that's paying dividends for us.
Good.
Is it, will it allow somebody else to replace it for us?
Yeah.
Basically.
All right. Any other questions for Dan right now?
Nope.
Okay. Jesse knows. Whenever he should come anywhere.
Good.
No, I don't. I have to admit, that's the first time I ever tried it.
Yeah.
And that cured me of it again.
Not for that.
And take, mom, get that right back out of your system.
Yeah.
I never eat, I never eat big meat stores in there. Cause when it's basic, it's like if they put food in front of you, you're gonna eat it. It's. Especially, well, these, these aren't that bad, I guess. Bushes there and the way everybody, Dr. Bean's not really good.
Yeah.
Just regular old bandicamps.
A little flat.
Did you get the email with the packet for the, we able to open it, seal and stuff?
No, I was gonna ask you about that. I had trouble opening it this time.
Sometimes when I send it zip. It's difficult. I think some stuff are individual and I might have to do a couple of emails. I don't know why sometimes if you zip it up and then you don't have the right and open it.
Send me, I'll send you in a couple of emails. Cause yeah, I, I tried it. There's four different categories in there and, uh, I couldn't get that thing open.
Hey, a little handier this year for you.
I know.
We're thinking about confiscating it.
Yeah.
No. Drastic times, drastic measures.
All right, do you just want me to kinda, if you guys have questions?
You know, it's, the numbers are gonna be plugged in and then we're gonna look at it again, so.
Okay, so for the nurse budget, some of the changes here, um. We did put in the six percent cost of living for staff, um. And then, as you can see, the line item. Official publication and legal notice grant promotion, um, that one went up. What that is, is we have received federal funds approximately ninety four thousand dollars to use for local public health technology upgrades. So that is money that would come back in. See another area down towards the bottom there. Uh, line item four four, four two four, um. That one increased as well. Um, with that, we found out that the current software program that we use. Will no longer be available for you as of when it comes to. Which we do for many, many years, so. Um, we are gonna have to with the new software that we're looking at, it is gonna be. Electronic health records now, which will be completely new for us, as we're out, we've always been paper records with our current program. So with that, um. It is gonna be a little more costly. We are looking into, we've reached out to surrounding counties to see what programs that they use, cuz it would be nice to get. Get on the same, um, so we are looking into that right now, um. The programs that especially like Mitchell and Winnebago are using. So with that, there is an initial startup cost. And then the monthly cost, so this number. Moving forward wouldn't be as high, it's, you know, due to that initial startup.
Is that something that's eligible to use the federal money for or no?
I reached out on that and they said, no, not for your own internal software. The one thing I'm hoping we can use it on is, which I know we can, um, cuz with the. Electronic health records, the nurses are gonna have to carry laptops or iPads into the, and the home parades into the homes. Cuz you're pretty much doing your targeting in the home. Um, so I think we will be able to get laptops through that. Um, probably the iPads too, so the electronic as a part of it should be covered under that.
Yeah, get whatever you can from. Push it, get whatever you can, cuz it's, yeah, it's gonna help us on the other side of. Have to make the changes.
Yeah, so unfortunately, that's what we're looking at with that.
Could last as long as the old system, that will help.
So that's kind of the changes in the nurse budget. Any other questions on that? Home maker, age budgets, um, again, the cost of living. And then, um, for motor vehicle equipment. We are this month, we're applying for W C D A grant to get to replace one of our home trade vehicles. So hopefully we'll get that and that's where the increase in thirty thousand comes from, so that'll be money back in as well. And then we did bump up, um, for the office. The four 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 two four, again, same as with the nursing, the aides also use the software program, so like a fourth of it goes with their budget. Environmental health. We did, we are getting more, um, the grant funds have increased, so that's why some of those numbers went up a little bit there, but that's. If we use it coming back in, um, other than the engineering service, that's the only non reimbursable. And transit, um, cost of living there. They are still receiving the time and half for hazardous paper, my fog and on there and that will continue as, as long as we're in a state of emergency. That's applied with that and then everything's reversible. Through the transit budget, other than the dues and membership.
Any new buses coming this way?
Yeah, didn't hear anything go out to meetings.
They're going after more, how that's all working.
Fared pretty well last year, wasn't it?
Last year, two years ago, didn't we get it done?
I know it was the last couple of years.
They were, yeah, they're gonna pay like twenty percent on it or something, there's eighty percent grant or something like that, so they got a very good deal.
I don't suppose it's possible to go to W C D A with the software up grant going from paper to digital for the health department in the county. You know, Teresa did that with Joel, they put together a grant, took everything in the quarter's office and went digital on that. And we got, gosh, I'd say a hundred and forty, fifty, sixty thousand.
I, I don't know, we could look into it. I mean, for like the more for like just the startup cost you're thinking, you know, otherwise it's just the monthly.
Not the monthly deal, but the startup. Yeah, just to get us over from paper to digital for the county.
And we're looking, did he say like ten to fifteen thousand on startup? That's how much, otherwise it's the monthly cost, but yeah.
Yeah, they're not gonna pay the monthly cost, but they, to kick in, if they pick up the tab on the startup cost to get us. From paper to digital for the county, for the health department. Possibility. Was it hard, it's not hard to write the grant, is it?
If you kept your request of ten dollars, you wouldn't have to have a second bid.
Well, that's right.
Hopefully some of the other funds can be used sometimes too.
Yeah, cause as long as, yeah, you have to be the second bid on everything, it's over ten thousand. They gave ten and we took the rest, that's, if they're taking two thirds of it, if it was fifteen thousand, if they're taking two thirds.
On those budgets, that's, that, on the startup cost, that's pretty huge. We're gonna get hooked with the maintenance.
But it is a big county improvement to go from paper to digital.
It is.
And I would think they'd back that a hundred percent.
We're thinking about taking the county back to paper and get rid of all this IT stuff.
Yeah, I'll try.
It's worth a shot. If you got time.
You don't need, you don't need border proof, but. I would say it would be worth a try.
And you wanna, you wanna help guarantee you'll get it, estimated cost of fifteen thousand, you're, you're asking for ten, you'll pay the other five. You'll probably see it, cuz then you've got some skin in the game. They like it when you put something in with it. Same with the vehicle, if you've got, I don't know, are you going to the whole works or you just gonna go, or do you have money set aside? That you could control with it?
We, so normally we don't go after new vehicles and, and, you know, I just told him, I says, you know, it's kind of foolish not to.
Yeah, we talked about this.
Stay bid and stuff, cuz the way used vehicles were, we were buying good, really good used vehicles, Danny's been doing a good job getting good used. Used vehicles right now are virtually the same price, you can get a new one discounted for only so.
So did you go after the whole thing or?
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
With the bids we had, it really helped, I mean, then you get some bids, so.
It'd just be minimal, that would be county, you know, but we wanna make sure we spend it all too, so we don't.
You know, that money's coming in, we might as well, they're looking for places to use it, one better places than county help.
Yeah, doesn't, and that's one thing that really doesn't increase the cost of the budget like this. I mean, we, we gotta have those cars, we have maintenance, we have fuel, we have all that anyway. If we put a new car out there for once.
Three to five years.
We appreciate that.
I figured the conservation department could get us a.
Yeah, that's true. That is true, so it's worth it. Anything else? We're flying blind here today. We'll, we'll look at these again. Appreciate you. Coming in.
Yeah, I'll thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, she don't have microphone, so she.
That's good.
We had this conversation too, maybe, you know, sometimes this is, I wanna say a waste of time, and I think it's important to come in, but. You know, until we sit down, look at it plugged in, we don't have a clue.
At least hit on the places where we see these increases. As to why.
Well, this is a good idea, I didn't even think about that at the meeting the other day, that, you know, just like our craft got hit with something, got no control.
Well, surprised me when you said you got the car. Yeah, but I mean, we mentioned it to her last year and she went after it, so.
And like I said, we've been on a rotation of used cars and the way of used cars, it's just ridiculous, so. Yeah, we aren't too bad. I would have venture to say we would still be looking at close to that, um, say fifteen, twenty, you know, like a program car, whatever you can find on. We'd be looking at about the same line. Within a couple of dollars. So why would you not go after, either way, you could go after a grand.
New is better.
Yeah, these used cars are just on sale.
They say they, yeah, people say that they've gone into that. As long as I don't have to pay for the oil, I'll do. All right, Teresa.
Um, my overall budget really didn't change, other than the increase hopefully the six percent. It is a renewal year for boats. So that's why there was a little bit of an increase on postage. And materials, um. As I cut those last year, when you guys asked us to tweak our budgets, so I'm gonna have to bump it back up to cover. The sending up the renewal cards for boats.
Do you have to send out renewal notice for ATVs? It's all online, isn't it?
Um, no.
Maybe I've missed it.
The D N R, we can request an email list if in your D N R file, you have your email in there. What we do, we request the D N R listing and then Jolene sorts through it, figures out which ones have emails versus just. Address, and so anyone that does have an email, we send out an email as a reminder. They will not get a postcard.
Okay, so are you required to send out postcards? I just care, this is a courtesy.
It's a courtesy, Liz had always done it. There's some counties, they don't send out any renewals for snows or boats. And I've contemplated that, but yet I've had so many people. That have commented. You know, or getting the email, so when people come in, we try and ask if they have an email address. So we can just email them the notice, because that has really cut down on our postage. But there are some. There's that generation that still likes to get that card and, and we do a yellow card and that's what they're used to seeing, so. You're stuck with a yellow card.
It's easy to ignore the emails too. But I just, you know, when we're looking at overall budgets, if there's things that we do or don't have to do, it's. Maybe that's what we're gonna have to.
If you guys want me to. You know?
I'd rather have you do it like you're doing or keep soliciting those emails from them. Every time you get them, more and more you get. We just cut this number down each year.
But boats, we have a lot more boats in the county versus snows and ATVs. But yet boats are on a three year cycle.
One percentage of that stays here.
The right in fee. Well, other than titles, we get a dollar twenty five.
We still should, that needs to get changed.
And, well, and that has something, you know, we've tried. In the past to get the fees increased. It's pretty much the D N R. And they just.
Increase the fees, just send back more, know people doing the work.
That would be nice.
If they did that.
You know, we had.
Increase the fees and they sent that back instead of them saying, oh, wait, we'll take half of it. Cause on a three year deal, a small fee is not.
I didn't give a dollar twenty five, it's really nothing.
Can you get a, can you get a popping?
And then they do, you know, sometimes they'll send us a check ahead of time and then we'll process it and we try and. Ask them to send postage to include a dollar for postage. So that way, it doesn't come out of my budget, we're sending it out. It puts it back on the customer.
I would think that would be an automatic.
It is on all new machines, if they get them from a dealer, the dealer collects that dollar for us, you know, so when we process it, we keep that dollar for postage. So it does cover the envelope and the stain.
And you can't drive the truck for a buck.
No, you can't.
Well, that's like life, it's feeling, and it's just, it's an extra fifty cents if you send it in, or you could drive. Go to the treasurer's office yourself, it's like for fifty cents, they'll send it to you in the mail.
You know, so we do try and have the customer pay the postage. But there are some, they send us a check, but they don't include the postage. So, you know, I cover the postage for mailing it out, basically. Well, yeah, you can.
To get the dollar twenty five process.
Post it back.
So that's why we try and ask emails. That's good. Come in, or if they call us, we'll pull up the D N R record and, okay, let's just verify the email address, so that way. We won't have to mail it in, cuz ideally, I would really like to just email.
Yeah, it's quicker for you guys.
Or some, they don't check it. So go, no, send me a postcard.
Feel like in the treasurer's office, when I do my truck and treasurer, there's a fee on there.
Yeah.
Cause we go to the office, it's less. And it's not that much. It might, it might be fifty cents a vehicle.
It's a little more than that. Town, you can't, you can't drive to town for the fee, you're better off paying the fee, you know, I mean, and there's is added right on, but it's. It's a little different if you're driving by, but.
And after pandemic, more and more people are just doing it, they're not showing up in the office.
But then realize they didn't have to.
Well, get in the habit of doing things.
It's a social aspect for a lot of people, it's the only time you really get to see guys, so.
But even, you know, since we were closed three days last week. You know, the mail, you know, we got quite a bit processed today.
Did they do a good enough job in your office, I guess we're asking?
I think so.
It did, it smelled, I was over there this morning early and it's a pretty good.
Walked in the front door this morning and said, it actually.
It smelled fresh. Cleanest has been in a long time, smell wise, and I don't mean that in a bad way, it's just, it's all courthouse, but it smells clean, cleaner.
You guys have any other questions? And if you want me to quit, send them postcards?
I will leave that, it's your department, it's your department, I mean, it's just that, I mean, it's easy to say.
There are some reporters, they don't send.
If it came down to, we were cutting budgets, you have something you work with, you know, if we're trying to make dollars, and then it's like, it's, it's your department, so we'll. See what happens, and that's all we can do.
I think you're doing it the way it should be done at the present time.
Question for these emails.
Good, Dan, just keep trying to get as much of that to the digital side as you can, I guess. There's always gonna be that twenty percent that's not, that doesn't do it that way. No matter what, if you got them all, you're never gonna get that amount of twenty.
There's people half my age that still won't use emails.
They might have an email, but they've never checked.
When they have to conflict with their email addresses, then you know.
I'm actually getting ready for the day that I don't pick emails anymore, so nothing to that.
Hey, so basically, can you hear me this time?
You bet, good.
Okay, basically, everybody else is not coming. So what I was wondering is, would it be okay if we just put budget on next week too, so if anybody wanted to. Get in or else, and I can give you updates too, and get you some more information also, I might leave it on for the next two or three weeks, just to.
We had the discussion, we talked to you Friday, you know, maybe this is something that, you know, we've always done it, but is it, you know, are we gonna, you know, versus. Getting the numbers in and then sitting down hard and crunching and stuff, you know, maybe that's something we'll be looking at going forward too. I mean, cause it's, you know, this is the first time we've seen them, so it's like, well, you know. And everybody's on the same boat, like always, every year, it's salaries and and benefits.
Own insurance, yeah.
Insurance, yeah, so.
But it's nice to have them show us the areas where it jumped.
Yes, I mean. Yeah, doesn't hurt for them to point that out, so, so we're on Thursday morning with insurance.
Correct.
Gonna be healthy.
I hope so, I I've had enough of this.
I bet you have.
I was almost excited about being at work today.
That's good. Okay, well, I guess. Then we'll just, nothing else, today I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll say it.
All right, all is fair, say aye. I wish you carried, all right, everybody stay healthy. We'll see you next week, or I'll see you Thursday.
Hey, thank you.